The session. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll say, can I ask?
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gibson, would you do us a certification as executive, please?
Madam Chairman, I will certify that to the best of our knowledge, on public business matters, often exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion to go into execution, were further discussed or considered on executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Sekoetan?
Yes.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Self?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have invocation and pledge. Mr. Ball, would you do invocation, the signal?
That's right. Oh, God, gracious, Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be in this building tonight, Lord, we just ask that your blessings be upon each member here tonight and each person, Lord, that everything said and done here will give glory to you and will be in the best interest of the school system. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda, Dr. Brown?
No, Madam Chair.
Approval too. Finalize it.
Question?
Sure.
On the extension, does that need to be voted on? On the retirement extension?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that, I see.
Yes.
That's fine, we can add that, I guess, that we find, uh, Madam Perk, that would be to extend the April 1st deadline for the retirement incentive to employees to May the 15th.
Okay, we have approval. Okay, let's prove the amended agenda. I need a motion. Thank you, Mr. Bostick, second.
I'll say, and then Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sekoetan. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll take us to the approval of the minutes. April 1st minutes.
So, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick, for second.
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the continued meeting on April the 20th.
So, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick, for second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Brown, that takes us down to the recognitions this afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we have a lengthy list on such, and I'll ask Mr. Pleasure, Assistant Superintendent, to join and lead that process.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, Madam Chair, and Mr. Board, it's a pleasure tonight to resume several recognitions. The first one we'd like to bring before you is a presentation of the resolution that you passed regarding Ben Chafin, and I'd like to invite his daughter Sophie. Sophie Vance, if you would come forward, and Dr. Brown will present you with the resolution.
I totally appreciate you, and you've been able to walk through to us, and I was able to move many of the guests for four and a half years, and it was incredible, man. This is a resolution that the board approved in January, February, and I'll present this to you.
Thank you.
Heather, would you like to give a plug there?
I'm a Russell Countyan, I always live here in Russell County, so I sure hope I go to school here, and I hope to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next, we're happy to bring to you the employees of the month. First of all, the teacher of the month, Ms. Terry Osburn. She is in the hallway.
She's outside. Ms. Osburn? Ms. Osburn?
And Ms. Bowman, her principal, is with her. Ms. Osburn teaches at Sword Creek, and I'd like to read the nomination form. Ms. Osburn is better known as Ms. O to her students and coworkers. She's been a constant inspiration to all she comes in contact with. She's taught school for 30-plus years, the first one to arrive at the school and the last one to leave. I've watched her help many children over the years. She's taught all three of my girls, and they have nothing but respect for her. She is the reason one of my girls is in college, because she inspired her to be a math teacher. She's always looking for ways to make a difference in our children's lives. She goes out of her way to make things better in these difficult times, always has a smile and an upbeat attitude. We're not just someone she works with, we're another child that she teaches. We are family to her as she is to us. Thank you, Ms. O, we love you.
That's beautiful.
Next, our support employees of the month, we have a double hammy here with us from Castlewood Elementary, the secretarial staff, Pauline Jesse and Sue Bundy. All right, I'd like to read this nomination form, too. It's been said that no one is more cherished in this world than someone who lightens the burden of another. Castlewood Elementary has been blessed with two remarkable ladies who made this marriage, Pauline Jesse and Sue Bundy. I could never truly measure their worth with few words on paper, but my tend to is genuine. These two are the epitome of a motherly figure, nurturing, compassionate, organized, caring, calm, mild-mannered, and soft-spoken, yet they are strong, intelligent, capable women who represent the backbone of a successful team of students and educators. Pauline and Sue brought them up each and every school day with their smiles, sass, and unsurpassed wit. Their great attitude becomes a great day, which becomes a great month, which becomes a great year, which becomes a wonderful place to work. For all the details you've arranged, and all the schedules you've changed, those short deadlines you easily made, and extra hours you gladly stayed, for sending forms and fixing files, poring through the paper piles, completing tasks with time to spare, keeping track of what goes where, placing orders for supplies, staying calm when tensions rise, typing emails and reports, handling crises of all sorts, taking calls throughout the day, and being great in every way. Thank you, Pauline and Sue, these are just a few reasons the two of you should be named employees of the month. Now, we're going to move on to the student recognitions. As you know, high school activities, Virginia High School activities have resumed pretty much, and we just got through in the middle of winter sports, no, it's false balls for basketball, so we do have some recognitions. First of all, from Castlewood High School, I'd like to invite Mr. Robertson and Ms. Robertson to come to the front here. Ms. Robertson is the forensics coach at Castlewood High School. Traditionally, he does very, very well. You all come on front and center. We're going to bring the students in one at a time in a second, but Mr. Robertson, Ms. Robertson, you all have a few remarks you'd like to make.
Just, I'm proud on a whole lot of levels, but I didn't have to say that, but I probably should, just to stay a bit ready. It's a blessing just to have her work with these kids. I've got to see what she's done with my own kids at home, but she treats our students the same way, and the success has been amazing. I mean, it's, when it comes to forensic times, one act time, we know, you know, we're going to have kids wanting to run, and they're going to have success. That's doing a large part to her, so. Ms. Robertson?
Well, we all know that this year has been very challenging in a lot of ways, and especially in an activity like this that, you know, it's based on speaking to the public, I mean, live theater, and these children have more than risen to the occasion. They have worked so hard, not only in selecting and memorizing pieces and infusing it, infusing them with all this characterization and emotion, but then they have built technology, too, and they have just amazed me with what they've been able to do. And I thank you all for letting them come tonight for recognizing it, because, you know, I've told them all year, try to squeeze all the normal that you can out of this year, but they have, it's been more than, I don't know, it's been more than just an activity. We've gotten closer, the kids have really come out of their shells. I have a couple of students who are not even in the drama class, but they were interested in doing forensics and one act. They've come to more the good of me than some of my actual students did, but we stayed in touch virtually, and that proved to be a good tool, because that's how we had to compete. And the day that these state finalists performed for their state competition, we had the worst storm I've seen in Castlewood in years, and internet was in and out, I mean, we had so many challenges, but they came through, they came through. And it's so difficult to do that, these kids, they feed what anyone would feed off of the audience, and you get that energy and emotion from them, and, you know, we had some kids doing humorous pieces, and they're staring at a chrome book, you know, they didn't get to hear the laughter. It's like when you try to tell a joke, and it falls flat, nobody laughs, but they persevered, and I said, if you can do that and be that animated in front of a chrome book, you can do anything. And the same thing with some of the serious pieces, you know, they didn't have the luxury of reading their audience's faces, they were staring at the camera, and they did it, they just, they did beautifully, and I am so proud, and I just, it's just, they've been one of the best parts of my year, they just, they've been precious, they've been blessed.
All right, first of all, Nick Wright. He's not here with us.
He's not here.
Runner-up in humorous duo. Tyler Jordan.
Is that his father?
He's also runner-up in humorous duo. Brooke Banner. Runner-up in serious duo. Come on to the front here.
Brooke. Presented to Brooke Banner, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning second place in the serious duo, 2021 VHS Ever, 1A State Forensics Tournament.
Congratulations.
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 Mackenzie Maxfield.
Is playing tennis this afternoon.
Runner-up in serious duo. Madison McConnell. Third place in humorous interpretation.
I ask the board, now, presented to Madison McConnell, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning third place in the humorous interpretation at the 2021 VHS Ever, 1A State Forensics Tournament.
Congratulations.
And Joey Wampfle, third place in storytelling, is not here.
Just team fight.
Yes.
Ms. Robertson. Presented to Castlewood High School, Forensics Team, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning third place at the 2021 VHS Ever, 1A State Forensics Tournament.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson.
Next, from Lebanon High School, we'll ask Ms. Fletcher and Ms. Stutes to come forward. Mr. Long and Mr. Garrett, where are they to be here, so Ms. Fletcher is filling in for them, and Ms. Stutes is the forensics coach. Fletcher, would you and Ms. Stutes like to make any remarks before we start?
Yeah, I'd like to start out by thanking Dr. Brown and the board for allowing our athletes and students to be here, to be recognized tonight. We've got two really great groups of students, and we, I can't say enough about either group. We're just so proud of them at Lebanon High, and despite all of the circumstances this school year, we realize all the hard work and dedication that had to go into forensics with Ms. Stutes and her students, and even though there were circumstances that kept them from doing things that the way they normally would, we were still able to succeed and represent Lebanon High School very well. So, just to congratulate Ms. Stutes for all of her hard work, and congratulate our students who will be coming in in just a second, again, we couldn't be any more proud of you guys.
Yes, thank you all so much for recognizing our students, and we really appreciate that. It's been a really tough, you know, 2021 school year, and I told the students when we started, I said, you know, we have a chance to make some, something beautiful out of something awful, and so we really got to do that, we got to make some art and put it out there, and we were successful with it. You know, going into it, we were virtual, so all of our competitions were kind of Zoom-based, and with all the technology issues that goes along with it, and they just rolled with the punches, and we're able to really, really create some wonderful things this year, and even at our state meet, which we had at the high school, our power went out, second round, and we were scrambling to get our phones to work and get back on, so even through all the adversity this year, we had a really, really strong team, and these students have really put themselves out there and said, forensics is a pretty vulnerable activity, because you take yourself and you become a character, you create your, you know, a new world for yourself, and then people judge you on that, and how you hold your body in your face, and, you know, in such a tough time, they were still able to put themselves out there and create that, and I'm really, really proud of the things that they've done this year, so thank you so much for recognizing them, but they've done a really, really awesome task this year, so.
Thank you. Shannon Booth.
Shannon, I have a question for you. Can I have you read this? Presented to Shannon Booth, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning first place in the humorous interpretation at the 2021 VHS Ever, 2A State Forensics Tournament.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good to see you.
Gracie Ford. Gracie, that one is. Got a question for you from the school board. Presented to Gracie Ford, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning second place in the humorous interpretation category at the 2021 VHS Ever, 2A State Forensics Tournament.
Thank you.
Congratulations, I'm proud of you.
Madison Huthman.
Madison, board has a question. Presented to Madison, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning third place in storytelling at the 2021 VHS Ever, 2A State Forensics Tournament.
Congratulations.
And Hemant Greading, I don't think is here, but he placed third in the top two speaking. Thank you, Ms. Stutes. All right, next, we have some wrestlers to recognize, and Mr. Webb is here, we'll ask him to come in. Coach Webb?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to make a few remarks about your team?
Sure, had a good group of kids this year, not the biggest team that we've ever had, but a very successful team, a lot of hard workers, biggest thing I'd like to thank them for is just making sure that they bought into following all the COVID protocols and stuff of that nature this year, kind of an unusual year, but just a great group of kids that we worked with, and just super proud and happy that I got the opportunity to coach them this year, so.
Thank you, great job. All right, first of all, we have Hunter Martin.
No, Hunter. Hunter's not with us.
Okay, he was third place in the 120-weight class. Ian Willis?
No.
Ian was runner-up in the 126-pound weight class. Luke Childers.
Presented to Luke Childers, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of third place in the 132-pound weight class at the 2021 VHS Ever, 2A State Wrestling Tournament.
Congratulations.
Jackson Moles.
Jackson from right up, right up, please, John. Jackson, we'll try to recognize you, we have some for you, they've only presented to Jackson Martin, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of fifth place in the 138-pound weight class at the 2021 Virginia High School League, Group 2A State Wrestling Tournament.
Good job, Jackson.
Cole Jesse.
Come right on up, come on up. Cole, we're going to talk to you, in recognition of your success, presented to Cole Jesse, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning first place in the 150-pound weight class at the 2021 VHS Ever, 2A State Forensics Tournament. Congratulations.
Good job, Cole. Good to see you.
Fisher Martin.
Uh, Fisher. Let's come right on up with. We're trying to recognize you, we have a question for you, presented to Fisher Martin, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning second place in the 170-pound weight class at the 2021 VHS Ever, 2A State Wrestling Tournament.
Good job.
Trent Ray.
Come right up, please. Trent, the board likes to recognize you, presented to Trent Ray, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning first place in the 220-pound weight class at the 2021 VHS Ever, 2A State Wrestling Tournament. Congratulations, son.
Good job.
And do we have Levon Thomas and Scott Bush with us? They're not here.
The pile line, Ed, is for the team, Coach, congratulations, we have presented to Lebanon High School Wrestling Team, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of their outstanding achievement, winning second place in Group 2A Wrestling Tournament. Congratulations, Coach.
Congratulations, you did a lot, you guys. Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations.
And now from Homemaker High School, we recognize their forensics winners, we'll ask Mr. Bush and Ms. Denzel to come forward. Thank you all for being here, Mr. Bush, Ms. Denzel, you all, and also your students.
I'd like to tell the board, I appreciate you recognizing all of our students at Homemaker High School, but all students in the county, this is really something I think you should be proud of, because I don't think all the boards around us do this kind of thing, so I appreciate it so much. We did have two students this year that played the state for rent. that we have here. They have both been in forensics since the eighth grade. Natalie even traveled with Mitchell, so she got to see forensics even before she was eligible. And I'll start with Natalie. Natalie is in the 10th grade and actually qualified for state last year in impromptu speaking and did not get to go compete. So, I was so excited and proud when she qualified for the state tournament this year. And Natalie approaches forensics the most analytical way that I've ever seen. I'm so proud of her. She had formulas and repetitions that she would do. She had it just mapped out mathematically, how she would do her speeches each time. She was ready for any topic. It's about the most analytical work I've ever seen, and she placed third in impromptu speaking again this year. So, I'm glad she got that second chance to go to state, and I'm super glad that she placed as well as she did this year. And then Mitchell, I've had him since the eighth grade. And Mitchell, the main thing I have written on all his recommendation letters, and I would say for him, is work ethic. You have never seen a student with more work ethic than you'll see in Mitchell. Ever since in the eighth grade, he gave everything. I never had to tell him to do more. Sometimes I had to tell him to do a little bit less. You have to break it down just a little bit, Mitchell. But no, he always brought 110%. And he switched to extemporaneous speaking, which is one of the hardest categories there is, because you have to be very well researched on current events. And he would research, he would print. He knows more about Brazil and Bangalore and all these crazy political things than I could even imagine. And I knew I could trust him this year. He would do his own thing, and we would just communicate a little bit, and he kept up with it. And I was so glad his senior year, he went to state in the 10th grade or 9th grade, was it, Mitchell?
9th grade.
9th grade. Went to state in the 9th grade, the first year he ever did this category. So, I'm glad this year he got to go to state and finish out his senior year and place third. So, I'm super proud of him.
Do we have some recognition from the board?
Natalie.
Presented to Natalie from Homemaker High School by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning third place in impromptu speaking at the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Wrestling Tournament. And presented to Mitchell from Homemaker High School by the Russell County School Board in recognition of third place in extemporaneous speaking at the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Wrestling Tournament.
Thank you.
And they will be right outside. Take a look at that, okay?
Thank you for giving that. Congratulations.
And finally, it's a pleasure to recognize the girls' basketball team at Homemaker High School. Coach Miller, if she could come in, please?
Yes.
Before we bring the students in individually, we'll see if you have any remarks either about the team.
I do. I'm very proud of these young ladies, and we all know we faced the adversity and all these challenges with COVID. It was definitely trying, but I appreciate Mr. Bush and the administration, and you guys for giving us every opportunity to have a season. Everybody's part of the honor, try to protect the girls, be safe, and been able to not get corned when we have a season. They work extremely hard. I'll never forget their faces last year when I had to tell them that they weren't going to be able to play in the state championship game. For them to be able to have the opportunity and go undefeated this season, and they're remarkable. I feel very blessed to have been a part, be able to have these young ladies, and for them to accomplish what they did. Truly remarkable.
I would like to say a few words. If you could write a book about, you know, the way that you overcome this COVID thing, this is the book that was directed. The way that we went to Richmond, getting ready to play the state championship game, and had the team getting ready to get on the bus, and then Governor constantly said, "It's an emergency", shut everything down. And, I mean, that was probably one of the hardest things that I ever had to do. The principal was go ahead and tell those girls and miss the team that we wasn't going to get to play. And I am so thankful, and we are so blessed that we were able to work, work really hard, and get back to where we were that year, and win another state championship. And like I said, just the way everything played out, it's just something to be very proud of. And like I said, you could write a book about the way things transpired during all those things. And I'd like to thank the school board, like I said, Dr. Brown, for all his support. You know, two times that came, it's something to be very proud of. You know, when we've been at Homemaker High School, and counted out in there, we've gotten into state championships. That's something that I'm really proud of to have at our school. We work hard, and I know Miss D, as an alumni at Homemaker High School, she loves Homemaker. She loves his kids. She loves her family. She put her heart so into it. And I couldn't ask for a better coach and a better person.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. All right, team members. Akila Boyd, did I say that right? Akila?
Kyle.
Akila, I'm sorry.
Your phone.
Kyle, the board would like to recognize you. Presented to Homemaker High School Basketball Girls, excuse me, Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement in winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship.
Thank you.
Yeah, probably have to be. Please walk in, and say, "I'll leave the board in. You're outside doing a photograph of the group outside." Okay?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys. I know about y'all. They went to have a season, so I really appreciate y'all's support. I know a couple of you made some moves. I don't know how many other people, but we do appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raleigh Hart, not here. Hallie Gilton?
Softball.
Softball. Lauren McLanahan, softball. Leanna McNulty, come in, Leanna.
And we have a small token for our appreciation for your work. Presented to the Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning the state championship girls' basketball. Thank you.
Good job. Congratulations.
Autumn Miller.
Autumn, we have a small token for you. Presented to Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship.
Thank you.
Yeah, probably have to be. Please walk in, and say, "I'll leave the board in. You're outside doing a photograph of the group outside." Okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys. I know about y'all. They went to have a season, so I really appreciate y'all's support. I know a couple of you made some moves. I don't know how many other people, but we do appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raleigh Hart, not here. Hallie Gilton?
Softball.
Softball. Lauren McLanahan, softball. Leanna McNulty, come in, Leanna.
And we have a small token for our appreciation for your work. Presented to the Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning the state championship girls' basketball. Thank you.
Good job. Congratulations.
Autumn Miller.
I have a question.
Autumn, we have a small token for you. Presented to Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Autumn Miller.
I have a question.
Autumn, we have a small token for you. Presented to Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Autumn.
Kyle Mance?
Yes, ma'am.
Vallee Stevens, did I say that right?
We have a recognition for you. Presented to Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Autumn.
Kyle Mance?
Vallee Stevens, did I say that right?
We have a recognition for you. Presented to Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship.
Thank you.
And Taylor Noll.
Great my thoughts. Thank you. I appreciate it. Good to see you.
All right. We have a presentation for you. Recognition of your hard work. Presented to Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I don't know if all the staff is here, but we would also like to present the staff with a plaque. Assistant coaches, Darryl Davis, Steven McNulty, Chris Anderson, and Brandon Miller. None of those were here. Chris Boyd, scorekeeper, Elena. There we go.
So, here's what I said to Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team. Again, presented to the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't know if all the staff is here, but we would also like to present the staff with a plaque. Assistant coaches, Darryl Davis, Steven McNulty, Chris Anderson, and Brandon Miller. None of those were here. Chris Boyd, scorekeeper, Elena. There we go.
So, here's what I said to Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team. Again, presented to the Russell County School Board in winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship.
Thank you. Elena McNulty, manager. Callie Miller, manager.
Good to see you, Doc.
Tanya McNulty, film. Anita Davis, statistician. And Trevor Cohen, athletic director.
Chris Boyd was the next one.
Do we have one?
There.
There?
Yeah. You can get Chris Darrell to your office.
You want to knock it in?
I got it.
Oh, okay. You want to see this one to me?
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We have two. Presented to the Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship. Ed Finch.
And then I'll present this one, if it's around to Ms. Miller, I'll present this to Mr. Bush. Presented to Homemaker High School Girls Basketball Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning the 2021 VHSL Class 1 State Championship. Hanging the haws, Homemaker High School.
Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
You take Dr. Brown, that takes us down to delegations on the agenda this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair. We receive no contact. Anyone want to speak to the board directly? We do have another delegation available at the end of the meeting for anyone here tonight.
Okay. Need approval for the bills and the accounts?
So, to the Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Do we have a second?
I'll sit in that Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Brown, approval of resignations and retirements?
Yes, Madam Chair. We do have a small list for the board's consideration tonight.
Do we have a motion to approve the resignations and retirements?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Second. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor? Dr. Brown, new personnel and transfers?
Yes, Madam Chair. Again, we have the list for the board's consideration tonight. Starting to grow. We've got into the process of interviewing now and such, filling positions for those individuals that are leaving us. So, we do have a little bit larger list for the board's considerations tonight.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve, the new hires?
I make the motion to approve the new personnel and transfers, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. You have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, yes, except on Ms. Fletcher. I have conflict of opinions with Ms. Fletcher.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Bostick. You can make that note. Okay, approval of the tenure?
I'm staying on her, in fact.
Sure. Okay, we got that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Every year, we have continuing contract approval for board's consideration. The list provided here tonight has supporting letters from principals of each individual, and again, annual approval for continuing contract status.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the tenure contracts?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Second.
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I like Mr. Bostick. Say, "Aye", I would accept. Kayla Gibson, I'm all in.
Okay, you don't want to.
You're staying.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. You've got that note. Okay. Okay, to our action items. Dr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have three items for the board's consideration tonight. First item, actually four items, I guess, with the adjustment we may have apologized. The first item is a second reading and approval of policies. Again, as members of the Virginia School Board Association, we do receive policies periodically for board members' consideration to implement to the Russell County School Board manual. The policies, again, were available to the board members last month with their review, and we have those before the board tonight for approval.
Do we have a motion for the policies?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Do I have a second?
Just a second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Brown, with the bench.
Yes, Madam Chair. We are required to present a budget of need to the supervisors every year. We have had previous conversations with them to provide them some information. This was a formal document for board approval out of our two budget workshops. At this point in time, the summary would be primarily, the big items would be the employee raises at 5% for all employees, annual insurance. Again, thanks to, much thanks to our committee member, members when it comes to our insurance committee. We went through 50/50 and 70/30. This year, we're going to offer for the board's consideration, 80/20 insurance plan. Also, the out-of-pocket limit's going to be reduced from 2475 to 7, excuse me, 2450 to 1750, and with no or minimal increase in premium responsibility for our employees. We're very proud to present that. I want to thank Mr. Gibson and Mr. Bostick for their hard work on that committee. Other than that, Madam Chair, traditional items, buses, explorers, and things of that nature. Personnel-wise, we do have a request to add a position for the ag program at Leonard, excuse me, Leonard High School, as we've outgrown our enrollment limits there, pushing over 150 students now with interest in that program. So, I have this before the board for their approval tonight to be offered to the board's supervisors. So move, Madam Chair.
I have a question. Do we need to put in what we were, maybe to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
But as far as the raise?
I guess just for the procedure, Wayne made a motion. Is there a second to that?
Not at this point.
Okay, so now we'll be probably another.
Again, thanks to, most thanks to our committee member, members when it comes to our insurance committee. We went through fifty-fifty and seventy-thirty. This year, we're going to offer for the board's consideration eighty-twenty insurance plan. Also, the out-of-pocket limit's going to be reduced from twenty-four-seventy-five to seven, excuse me, twenty-four-fifty to seventeen-fifty and with, with no or minimal increase in premium responsibility for our employees. We're very proud to present that and want to thank Mr. Gibson and Mr. Bostick for their hard work on that committee. Other than that, Madam Chair, traditional items, buses and explorers and things of that nature. Personnel-wise, we do have a request to add a position for the Ag Program at Honeycrack, excuse me, Eleven High School as we've outgrown our enrollment limits there, pushing over a hundred and fifty students now with interest in that program. So I have this before the board for their approval tonight to be offered to the board's supervisors.
So do, Madam Chair.
I have a question. Do we need to put in what we were? Am I going to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
But... As far as the raise?
I guess just for the procedure, Wayne made a motion. Is there a second to that?
Not at this point.
Okay, so now we'll be probably another motion if I'm in my second.
There's another second yet. If you'd like to.
I will go on.
Sure. The initial raise, five percent for everyone and another half a percent for teachers and support below like the Cooks and Jennifer Royal people and...
If I may, Mr. Ball, could we save in a approval estimated with an additional half a percent for non-administrative positions?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item number three. Yes, ma'am. I apologize.
Yes.
Item number three, correction in the FY twenty-two calendar with July fourth following on a Sunday. Staff recommend consideration of July the sixth to be that second day for the holiday. The July fifth was already in the calendar. So again, it would simply be for the July fourth holiday since July fourth is on a Sunday to be Monday and Tuesday that month.
Thank you for making that correction, Dr. Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion, please?
So do.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor? Any opposed? Coronavirus update, Dr. Brown?
We have a fourth action item, Madam Chair, that we added at the beginning of our meeting, if I would.
Okay.
I can cover that, Madam Chair. The motion would be, or the discussion would be with a motion to consider moving the deadline for retirement notification for the retirement incentive for health insurance from April the first to May the fifteenth. We've had, of course, some consideration with staff, I guess, having trouble making those decisions with all the variables in play right now. Obviously, from conversations tonight, it's been obviously a trying year. I'm fine offering that if the board is, as an offer to our employees, to extend that to May the fifteenth.
Okay, do we have a motion from the board? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Bostick. All in favor?
Madam Chair, with our information items tonight, again, we've had a coronavirus update on for the last several board meetings, information to share with the, with the board. Unfortunately, my day is, is a lot of Zoom meetings, has been for quite, you know, quite a while. I can share with you some conversations today with the Director of our Health District, Dr. Shelton, concerning some coronavirus information, some updates. Things are trending in a positive light. We hope, of course, that that continues. We have had an opportunity for our sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old students to receive the vaccine in school. We had that last week with the first shot, and we had forty-three students that took advantage of that. And we also, we had several students that went low-gluute to our pharmacist and got their shots there as well. So that's very encouraging. Information today from Dr. Shelton included an expectation for our twelve- through fifteen-year-old group to have an opportunity in the very near future, before school's out, to start the two-shot regiment for the coronavirus COVID- nineteen vaccination again in schools. We're really excited about that news. It's hard to imagine, as we were sitting or standing here last year, thinking that not only would we have a vaccine, but we've been able to give that vaccine to basically all of our high school students by the time we have this twelve- through fifteen-year-old group and then actually the upper half of our middle school. So again, we're really excited about that. It's hard to believe that we've come that far in such a time. So, but that's, that's some information. Also today, the Governor, twelve, excuse me, eleven o'clock, had a press conference, and he did share that, again, things are trending in the right direction, and if things continue to trend, we're going to continue to have restrictions loosened moving forward with the possibility of June fifteenth having nearly all COVID- nineteen restrictions lifted, with the exceptions of masks. At that point in time, he will yield to CDC guidelines that are active at that point. So again, we're really excited about some of the changes that have come. And again, this is the National Teacher Appreciation Week, and the work our teachers have done is absolutely incredible. You know, think back to last summer and the work we did with professional development and working with new programming and getting teachers comfortable with recording and engaging students through meets and Zoom and other instruments. It's just, just really incredible work our teachers have done this year. And I know that you're looking forward to a break here in about a month, which is to keep our heads down, keep plowing hard ahead to get to that point. Again, information for the board.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Dr. Brown. Since you mentioned the mask, I know Southern County, Tennessee, forty minutes down the road, and basically unmasked their schools. And with the summer coming, it's getting hotter every day, and summer school coming. And I think it's something we all, you know, because I think if we wait on CDC or Dr. Bouchier or our Governor or President, they're never going to say. So I think this board ought to look to do what Southern Tennessee do, and unmask the kids. Now, if you kids want to wear a mask, you know, that's fine. But, you know, with most of our faculty having shots if they want them, I think the science shows that kids are not the spreaders that they must help them to be. And when they, if they do get it, typically not very serious. So I really think that, you know, there's got to be an end point sometime because if the vaccine is the one that should leave your life, why take the vaccine? So I think we really have to start having a serious thought about, you know, taking action. I mean, I'll add that before the motion.
May I speak for that?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson, in the state of Virginia, we're still under an executive order by the Governor. Okay, so executive order is law, and I, I would not recommend that. At this particular time, I do feel that we can definitely look into it, but the Governor's requirements in Tennessee are not the same as the Governor's requirements in Virginia at the time. So I don't, and please, Ms...
I agree. I mean, I think once the Governor lifts his restrictions, that gives you the flexibility to make that decision if you're not bound by the CDC or other recommendations that are involved. If the Governor lifts his order in place, we do have to abide by it. But it sounds like hopefully that's going to be going away, hopefully in June. And so again, I think it depends. It's your discretion whether you want to keep it in place or end it. I know there's several states that have done that. Their governors have taken actions to, to, to put that in place regarding masks.
I would probably understand. Okay, I just, I have to get on my mind.
No, no.
It's, it's an opportunity to say.
I, I totally understand, Mr. Gibson, and I'll, I'll record it, gather information to see how quickly we can do that very thing, sir.
So they're still required outside? Is that right, Dr. Brown?
They're, they're required outside only if you're in a crowd where you can socially distance right now.
So like your, like our students are out playing or during, during breaks outside, do they still have to stay masked?
That's, that's something that, that I do believe we can gain approval from. We'll speak to the Virginia Department of Health representatives to get their blessing on that. But I, I do think that would...
Yeah. I mean, as these days get warmer and, you know, when they're outside, it has to be miserable. I mean, probably more take it in, I mean.
Just may.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Our sales tax? Three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine twenty-nine sixty for April. ADM? Three thousand three sixty-five. Is that right, Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Okay, does any board member have a question about the maintenance or spinning to report? Future agenda items?
Madam Chair, again, we definitely can be expecting some more policies coming down for the legislative action this spring. Most of the policies the board dealt with with this, of this group they just approved were more, again, context, not content issues and so forth, references, that type of thing. Things of content will, will come probably with the next wave of policies, and we'll get that before the board as quickly as we can.
Delegations? None on the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. We want to have you turn the voting over. Anyone who'd like to speak to the board?
I just want to come before you today as a representative for the Virginia Education Association. Formerly being an employee of Russell County Public Schools, we've worked together for many years as we try to overcome the salary issues that we have in Russell County. And I know that the school board's hands are tied in so many ways because of the need for funding from the board supervisors. But I'm glad that we're able to be able to find another way to help close that gap that we experienced with Russell County and the other school districts that we have in Region Seven. So being teacher appreciation, we, we are thankful for every teacher, not only in Russell County, but the other school districts and all these school employees as well, because it's truly taken a team effort for it to do what they've been able to do this year, having in-person students as well as virtual students and cleaning the schools, feeding the students, no matter what mode of instruction that they're in. So thank you for taking the time and the effort. I know it hasn't been easy to try to incentivize our employees the best way that you can in the financial constraints that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs.
Anyone else?
And the board would like to recognize our teachers and Appreciation Week, and I thank all the principals for whatever they did for our teachers at their schools. So we want to thank them.
We thank them.
Yeah, we want to thank Eleven Middle School, I think that was. The next meeting will be June third.
Yes, Madam Chair. Correction on that, but we do have the executive session at five-thirty. I need to remind the board, we actually need to meet at four-thirty.
Yes, sir.
To finalize the superdance evaluation for twenty-one.
Does the board have anything else they'd love to say, other board member?
I didn't hear.
I said, does any other board member have anything they would like to say this evening?
I'd like to say something, if I may. I'd like to explain myself on a couple of those, if I, if it's...
Sure.
Last meeting I voted against cutting school three days, and my reasoning for that was this. By cutting school up three days, you gave the teachers a, basically a three-day paid holiday. The administrators did not get anything out of it at all. The people that are not full-time employees, which is approximately a hundred, lost three days paid, and they're to bottom of the scale. And tonight, my vote was no on the budget because of the one, half a percent. I don't mind giving a half a percent, but I feel like all employees are worth the extra half a percent, not just teachers. And the reason I say that is a few years back, we had a, some information on administrations across the state of Virginia. And at that time, just my recollection, the assistant principals was like twenty thousand dollars, I believe, behind state average. Principals was twenty-some thousand behind state average. And I feel like that, I know that we feel some of them are in the positions they're in, maybe high, but you consider it with the average across the state, we're still way behind the average. And I feel like if, I mean, I just feel like we need to dream all the same. That's, that's just me. That's all I was going to tell you.
Thank you. Mr. Bostick? Anyone else have anything they would like to say this evening?
Okay. Madam Chair, you made a...
Sure.
We did a journey, need to move the meeting there. I know about the ground holding there.
Mm-hmm. Since you're doing it... We'll do it at four-thirty.
Since you're doing it at a time that's not a regular time, you have a feeling of motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a move there. Next, Jim, let me talk.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. We have a second. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor? And have a safe evening and for travel. And thank you for your coming this evening.
Should we adjourn?
We stand adjourned.
He beat me.
You can say it.
I will say it.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you, everyone, for...